The June 16, 2021 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking, as well as please state your name prior to making a comment or a motion or a second for an action item. And I thank you for that. I'll ask that each Commissioner please respond with a "here" when I call out his name. Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bagnall, me, I am here as well. So we will start off tonight with reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff. So Tom, take it away.
Thank you, President Bagnall. Commissioners, good evening. Going to jump into this. So Portland crypto-spiridium results for the month of May 2021. The Portland Water Bureau reported no crypto-spiridium osis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks. Complete results of Portland's crypto-spiridium monitoring are posted on the city's website, City of Portland. This is emerging news here, and I have a few slides on this. I also have Chief Engineer Pack and her staff, our water quality supervisor, Joel Carey, to answer questions on this. But we've been notified of a chlorine supply shortage. So I'll read this. Our partner agencies who provide TVWD's water supply are currently experiencing issues procuring chlorine for water treatment. The supply shortage includes both liquid and hypo, and impacts the West Coast. The shortage is caused by an equipment failure at a West Coast chlorine manufacturing facility. Additionally, system demand is up, which is increasing chlorine demand. It is important to note that TVWD has a good supply of water, and the water provided remains safe to drink. Currently, we've, JWC, working with JWC, they're telling us they have about 26 days on hand under current projections. Depending upon, you know, how much demand goes up, that could change. So the Oregon Utilities are working with the Governor's Office, Emergency Management, Oregon Health Authority, Department of Environmental Quality, the Oregon Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network, ORWRN for short, and federal authorities requesting assistance in acquiring chlorine for state and the region. So there's been a number of meetings held on this. There continues to be. We're all getting updates at this point, almost by the hour. But the manufacturing facility is trying to get back up in line, but that right now, their soonest projection would be the end of this month, somewhere around the 27th, before it's back up and running, if everything goes right. So it's a pretty serious situation, but we are putting everything we can together to address the situation. And one of the JWC water treatment plant is researching the possibility of converting to hypo in a hybrid situation. If hypo can be obtained, they may be able to feed both hypo and gas together. This would conserve or extend the gas supply. JWC is also experiencing onsite generator skids and other chemicals to use as pre-oxidants. So we are working with our partners to pursue this matter. I can tell you, there's, it seems like at this point, there's no entity that we are involved in that isn't pursuing this, including SDAO, OAC, and a number of others that are all trying to address this issue. So let me just see here. I don't remember if I got another, oh, before I get to that. So before I move to the next slide here, I'd just like to open it up because this is new information for the Board. Do the Board members have any questions for myself or for Chief Engineer Pack or Joel Carey on this?
So this is new and very frightening information. What happens if we do run out of chlorine options?
Well, guess what?
So let me just, let me answer a quick question, and then I'm going to ask Joel to expand on anything I say wrong. One, we don't, we're not in that stage yet. We have chlorine at hand at all of the water sources, and the water that's going to customers is all safe to drink. So, you know, what we're talking about is what happens if we run out of chlorine? And we're trying to, one, do things to make the chlorine that's on hand last longer by changing some operational changes, making some operational changes right now. And two, we're also exploring some other options for creating additional ways to provide disinfection to our water. So we would not be providing water if it was not safe to drink. So I just want to be real clear that water we're providing to our customers are very safe and shouldn't have any issues. If we get to that level, there are several steps that we can take to make sure that the water is, continues to be safe to drink. But before we get there, we've got a little bit of time. And one thing I wanted to, you know, I asked Tom to bring this up because we wanted you to know that this is, it is a very late-breaking news. You know, you see the big late-breaking news signs on TV all the time. And we were, we wanted you to hear it from us that we're working the system and we're working for a solution. We didn't want you to see it on TV or get it from somewhere else because we think that the media is probably going to get into mode of figuring out, you know, probably sensationalize the situation more than it needs to be. So we wanted to talk to you before it got to that point. The other thing is, this isn't just this region. It's going all the way up to Everett, Washington, and all the way down to Southern Oregon, all through West Coast. The facilities are being impacted, both the wastewater and water facilities, not just water facilities. So all of the wastewater groups are working with the water groups. You know, they're talking about can the wastewater agencies push back their use and, you know, provide different disinfectant products to the water group? We're realizing that water is probably, public health is significantly more important for drinking water than the wastewater plants, which are, you know, they have to do their job. But it's a different level of criticalness, in my opinion. So I just wanted you to know that we're all working together, and the Governor's Office is hugely involved, you know, League of Oregon Cities, the County Emergency Office is involved in. And we have so many cooks in the kitchen right now. For TVWD, we've asked Joel Carey, Water Resources Division Manager, to be that spokesperson and the point of information dissemination as we move forward with addressing this issue. So Joel, correct me on anything I said or add to whatever I didn't say.
That was all exactly right, exactly what's going on. I just, well, only thing I will add right now, and if there's more questions, we'll happily answer those. But the drinking water community elevated this situation to our state level and federal level emergency management folks, I mean, immediately knowing we wanted to make sure that we were, we were stressing the importance and criticality of this issue. So Homeland Security is actually involved as well right now, given the regional impacts that we're dealing with, so.
Joel, this is Jim Doan. Does that mean that there's only one supplier in the Pacific Northwest?
Commissioner Doan?
I'm sorry?
You are correct.
Joel, do you want to, Joel, would you expand on the other area? This is, there's a perfect storm at hand, unfortunately. So why don't you explain what's happening in other areas also?
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. Commissioner Doan, do you have a follow-up question you want me to answer now, or do you want me to explain the situation first?
No, I was just, the mics, the point was, it's pretty precarious to have only one supplier, both in terms of chlorine availability and in price escalation.
Absolutely all correct.
A little concerned about that.
So is everybody else. So what came to light out of part of this was that you are absolutely correct. There is one supply manufacturer in the entire Pacific Northwest that's located in Washington, and in fact distributes their supply even down as far as Northern California at times. So that one supplier provides to all the distributors. That's who notified a lot of the regional agencies. What we found out about the situation is the supplier had, or excuse me, the manufacturer had a large-capacity electrical transformer that went down, completely taking out production. So they've been out of production since late last week. As Tom noted, they're expected to get production up, but potentially right now, the latest information we have is by the end of this month, by the 27th and 28th, if everything goes according to plan. Obviously, according to plan is why we're sitting here and making sure that we're communicating with the state and our federal partners to make sure that there is a whole lot of effort and coordination around this right now, in case that plan doesn't pan out. So yeah, that's one of the issues that we're talking about. This has actually been a national issue as well. Multiple plants around the country were dealing with the stresses of a lot of events that occurred from weather events. And the latest one we actually heard today, surprisingly, was that the plastic manufacturing industry, and even specifically plastic pipe, has actually been taking a significant amount of the chlorine production right now, and they've been prioritizing that. So it was kind of a series of perfect events that came together right now to create the situation, fortunately. But it's one of the things that we're definitely going to keep pushing on and talking about moving forward, is that's, that's not, it's, you know, in our sectors, public health agencies, the fact that we try and make sure we're resilient as possible, yet we're dependent on a single point of failure is something that we need to keep talking about.
Joel, what's the plan if we can't get chlorine?
So there's a couple approaches. Carrie kind of alluded to it too. So I mean, obviously, we know that, you know, we're trying everything to make sure we don't get there, but there's multiple things that everybody's working towards right now. One of those is identifying availability around the state of capacity for other agencies. As Carrie noted, our sources, including Portland, are actually what we're calling trimming down the supply and the dosing points just enough. And you know, that doesn't double the amount of time, but it at least adds, you know, several days to the supply scenario. And if we do get to that point, Commissioner Doan, the conversations that we're having are about what level of communication with our customer base, knowing this is a statewide issue and that that communication may happen to state for some level of early curtailment, meaning just conservation measures, communication, combined with the issue of if we do physically run out of chlorine, then that conversation will, we'll have discussions about any kind of public notifications, i.e., you know, boil water notices, the water's still usable, but it needs to be boiled for consumption. So there's kind of these multiple pathways that we're trying to look at right now to make sure we're planning for that possibility, even though we think right now the situation is likely turning the corner. But again, we want to make sure that we're completely, totally, fully aware of what's happening.
And I just can't reiterate the importance of not, you know, running out to Costco and buying pallets of water. This is not, let's not have the, you know, toilet paper version two just yet. We have, we have, we're working the system, and we feel comfortable with where we're going. And we, you know, we'll be, we'll be talking, providing additional communications and updates to you and general public as those become into a different phases. I just, I don't want to have a run on water bottles right now, so.
Yeah, to add to that, Carrie, too, one of the updates as of this afternoon, that one of the regional distributors in the Northwest was, has been able to procure some of the chlorine coming out of Canada. So there are supply shipments that have now been, been able to come down for JDPC as well. So that hasn't actually shown up yet, but it should be in the next 24, 48 hours. So again, just, the situation is evolving. It's fluid, no pun intended, and we're doing our best to keep on top of it literally every hour of the day.
Okay, one, one statement, not a question, but there are probably utilities in worse shape than we are, undoubtedly. And maybe we should offer whatever we can offer, whatever we can spare, to help those people out. But I'm sure you're already taking those kinds of steps.
Yes, Commissioner Doan, that is actually part of the survey that we coordinated through the state emergency management system and with OHA. In fact, as of this evening, they're setting up a joint information command center to push that information out. We're asking utilities who have potential extra capacity to identify that because we have heard from some utilities across the state that are actually down to closer to about 10 days or less of current supply. So, point absolutely well taken, and yes, that is something that we are all going to keep working towards to support our drinking water providers, frankly, across the state. Because we are one, we are one, you know, messaging community system when it comes to this type of event. Thank you.
That is really frightening, and I very much appreciate, and I'm sure everyone does appreciate all of the proactive efforts from the Board to deal, from the staff to deal with this. Going further, back to the CEO announcements, and I hope there aren't any more stinkers like that one.
I hope not. I will just share that the risk manager came into my office today, and he said after analyzing all of the data, he is realizing that all natural disasters have resulted since I've been hired.
Okay, a solution presents itself, and yet we can't go there.
So, no, we are all over this, and we will continue to work with all of our partners on this to get everyone through it. So, next issue I wanted to bring up, the Commissioners' Oaths of Office. Typically, the Commissioners take an oath of office at the July Board Meeting in person. Commissioners Bagnall, Duggan, and Schmidt were recently re-elected to serve on the Board and need to complete their oaths. There is no requirement that the oaths must be conducted during a public meeting. Since the Board has not yet resumed in-person public meetings, do Commissioners prefer to schedule appointments with the district recorder to fulfill their oaths?
This is Dick. I would just as soon schedule it with them.
Okay.
Thank you, Dick. And this is Bernice Bagnall. I already have a scheduled meeting with the district recorder to sign documents tomorrow. So if I could just do my oath at that same time, that would be very convenient.
Absolutely. I'll have it prepared for you.
Commissioner Duggan, what about you?
I was thinking, I'm fine with whatever the rest of the Board is okay doing, which would be scheduling a separate meeting. So if we schedule an individual appointment with the district recorder, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. So that will, that will be very different than the usual stumbling assembly of trying to do it all together. But, you know, in these, in these times, we just move ahead and do what we can. Next thing, Tom?
This is Dick. I'm used to being sworn at, so I'm good with it.
This will be no big deal for you.
I just wanted to make the Board fully aware of my upcoming schedule. I'm going to be taking some vacation time in the coming weeks. Paul Matthews will serve as acting incapacity for the Chief Executive Officer, June 21st through the 23rd. Although I will be participating in morning meetings each of those days, but I won't be physically here. So I'm having Paul step in during that time. And then I've got Chief Engineer Kerry Pack will serve as acting incapacity, July 2nd through the 16th, and when I'm heading to Colorado during that time. So it will be in their hands, and we'll find out if natural disasters continue while in their hands. We know it is not a result of just me alone, so. I am sorry, I do try to find humor even in the dark corners of what we deal with. So Safety Minute and Department.
If the whole chlorine thing hits the fan, you'll be gone.
Tonight, Safety Minute and Department Report is going to be by Dave Kraska, our Willamette Water Supply Director, and I'm going to turn this over to him at this point. So Dave, you can take control.
All right. Thank you, Tom. President Bagnall, Commissioners, good evening. Taking control now. And here we go. So Safety Minute, fireworks. It's that time of year again. Yay. You probably hear your neighbors already firing them off. Well, don't. Just leave it to the experts. In 2017, for example, eight people died and 12,000 were injured badly enough to require medical treatment. And most of those incidents were due to amateurs using professional-grade, homemade, or illegal fireworks. And fireworks start in estimated 18,500 fires each year, including 1,300 structural fires and 300 vehicle fires. And we all know how bad that could be this year. So if you must, do your own fireworks. Follow these tips. Keep young kids away. Just keep them entirely away from the fireworks. Older children, okay, but only under close adult supervision. Never while impaired. You all know what that means. Wear protective eyewear if you're around fireworks at all. And never hold them in your hands, even sparklers. Those things burn at 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit and account for 25%, a quarter of the emergency room visits, half of which are children under five. So some more tips. Never indoors or in a container. Do I really have to say this? And only away from people, houses, and flammable material. Again, sorry, Clark, but you know, these are the rules. Please follow. Never, Clark, again, please, never point or throw fireworks at another person. Please stop doing that. And only one device at a time. Focus on one device, not trying to light a whole bunch of them and running away. And again, some more tips. Do not try to relight or handle malfunctioning fireworks. And whether it's a malfunctioning firework or one that's already gone off, soak it in water for a few hours before discarding. Keep a bucket of water nearby and never use illegal fireworks. And just in case you're wondering, that's a dummy, or meaning not a real person. That was a TV stunt about somebody holding a firework over their head, kind of what it looks like if it goes off. So finally, have fun, avoid injury. Don't be the cause of the next structural wildland fire. Leave fireworks to the experts. So that's it for the Safety Moment. Let's continue on with the Department Report. And so we canceled the July work session, where I typically do a WWSS report of the upcoming meeting and so on. So this will be a very short version of that, cover some other things, and of course, the construction update that everyone likes to see. So this is a slide that we often show, or every month we show to the Management Committee on the WWSS, and it briefly describes all the other activities occurring on the program. And so let me walk through it, starting from left, the left column going to the right column. A lot of procurements that are going on right now in the program. We have our PLM 4.1 project. That's our pipeline project in Sherwood, crossing Highway 99. That one, the bids were opened, the bids came in good. More excavation was the low bidder. It's a Washington County project, so it's a partnership project with them, but we're happy with the bids that came in. We have some water testing units that are part of our water supply integration project that just came in. We have RFK responses for materials testing services. Our CMMS integration, RFI, was completed, and RFP development is underway. And our PLM 1.3 special procurement document is in development. We recently completed a STAG LOI. STAG is State and Tribal Assistance Grants. So we're looking for some money for the program to cover some of the costs, which we think is a really good thing to do. Baseline 6.1 implementation plan and steel market analysis were recently completed as well. Addressing a couple of owner-requested changes. And we're advancing, we're still in the design phase on some projects. Seven pipeline projects, our water treatment plant. Water Treatment Plant is wrapping up design. We should be at 100% design in July. Our reservoir project and our DCS, or Distributed Control System, project. Constructing projects, we have the numerous pipeline projects here that I'll be talking about tonight, and our raw water facilities projects. A lot of our projects are in partnership or in coordination with other agencies out there. You can see the four projects that we're coordinating with the City of Wilsonville, a lot of projects that we're coordinating with Washington County, and then others that we're coordinating with, including ODOT, developers, and PGE. In addition, there's a lot of progress or a lot of planning that's going on in the program, commissioning and startup that will occur in 2025, 2026, our operations planning that will occur thereafter, and our water supply integration planning that will occur when we're turning on our supply. What the slide doesn't show is all the other activities, including our work on intergovernmental agreements, memorandum of understanding, our real estate activities, including right-of-way, and all of our permitting activities. So again, one slide covering a lot of the stuff that's going on in the program. So, but you're all here for the construction update. So let's get into some really good photos that I got for you tonight, and a bonus video on a really cool activity. I'm going to focus on everything on the right-hand side of this graphic. There's not a lot of really interesting work going on on the pipeline projects on the left-hand side, PLM 5.1, PLM 1.2, PLM 1.1. So I'll focus on the raw water facility projects and three pipeline projects shown on the right-hand side. Starting with our raw water facility project, that is a lot of work going on there. We completed our pipe ram at Arrowhead Creek, and now we're removing the spoils from the casing. I've got some information to show you, some slides to show you on that. We continued concrete construction of our new flow meter vault at the upper site, continuing the installation of our 66-inch raw water pipeline through the park area. We completed, we are performing core drilling of the openings of the west wall of the raw water pump station for our new pump discharge header piping. We continued backfill the access road used for the ground improvement work, and that's down at the riverbank. And we've also removed the tree protection sheet piling there to protect the trees when we were doing the ground improvement work in that area. This is a photo showing the construction of the very large vault that will house our 66-inch raw water flow meter. And so you see the 66-inch pipe section entering the wall there, and then the workers there overlooking the concrete placement process. Also in this photo is a lot of, a lot of good work in terms of the safety and protection of the workers in the area. A lot of sturdy guard railing platforms and protected areas so where people can stand and observe safely. Keywit, Keywit is the general contractor on this work, and I keep hearing from the folks in the field that they are doing an outstanding job in terms of keeping everyone safe on the job. This is a photo showing, looking towards the Willamette River across what used to be the water treatment plant park, and what will be again the water treatment plant park once all of our construction activities are complete. But this shows the installation of a section of our raw water pipeline. They're doing excellent work here as well. Very clean work site, and again, very safe work site with the indication there of where to stay out of the, out of the construction zone. Now we're down towards the, towards the Willamette River there. And this, this is, so this is near the riverbank. In this photo, the river is behind you. And so this is looking back up towards the treatment plant. In the foreground there, all of the gray there is the CLSM cap on top of our ground improvements works. So CLSM is Controlled Low Strength Material. So essentially, that's just our. So essentially, that's just our low-strength concrete cap on top of all the ground improvement, basically just to tie it all together. And in the background there, you see the gray walls, the raw water pump station, and the raw water pump headers protruding there through the concrete wall. We're going to be core drilling larger diameter holes through that concrete wall because our raw water pumps are going to be larger than the discharges that were originally installed on this pump station. Now on to the trenchless crossing of Arrowhead Creek. So this is a really nice overhead aerial photo of Arrowhead Creek there in the center, going from top to bottom. And then on the opposite sides, the shafts. On the left-hand side, you see the larger diameter sending shaft. On the right-hand side, the smaller diameter receiving shaft. And so between those is about 270 feet of pipe that we had, or casing that we had to drive from the sending shaft to the receiving shaft. And the equipment that did that is the pipe ram equipment. It's a very powerful machine that basically just hammers the pipe through the ground and through all the boulders and everything underneath Arrowhead Creek. And if you've got real good eyes, you can see one section of the 84-inch casing that is waiting to be dropped down into the sending shaft to be attached to the casing that's already underneath Arrowhead Creek to be rammed through. This is a progression of photos that shows inside of the receiving shaft. Shows the other side of the creek. And it shows that concrete cap being pushed out by the pipe ram, shoving the pipe through that concrete cap and completing the crossing. Now if you want to turn up the volume here, this is actually a video of that actually occurring, so here we go. Oh shoot, let me try that again. There we go. So the people in the field tell me that the power of this pipe ram is just phenomenal. Standing on the ground, you can feel where it hits, where the hand, the pipe ram is the key, it's a great powerful machine. And then concrete caps being pushed out, it's about 20 pounds of ounces. It's a really ominous sound, I hope you could actually hear that on your computers, but the ominous sound.
How cool was that? And that next picture with all of the guys being there? That's one of those, especially being married to an engineer. That's one of those pictures that everybody gets and hangs on their wall, and deservedly so. That's amazing.
Yep, yep. Thank you, President Bagnall, that was exactly the reaction I was shooting for tonight. Is to be just kind of in awe of the work that's going on out there, to get our work done. To accomplish this incredible feat of bringing water from the Willamette all the way up to our service area requires activity like this. And I saw this post on social media and LinkedIn on Friday night. And from JW Fowler, so it's the general contractor doing this work. And it shows, and then there's a post and there are comments about how they're proud of their work and they accomplished this safely. And you know, a contractor going into this kind of activity, they're worried about the risk associated with it. And risk from all different angles, and that they completed it safely and successfully, they're really proud of that. And to me, it was a real notification, it's like, wow, the folks that are working on this program are impressed by it themselves and proud of their work. And something like this really shows it, and I just thought it was a really cool thing and I wanted to share it with you tonight.
Thank you so much, and you know, to me, one of the other things about it, it's like, this is what made me go into utility economics instead of velocity of money stuff. This is real stuff. We're spending huge amounts of money, but my God, look at what is being accomplished for those huge amounts of money. This is real things that mean water, that mean livelihoods, that mean everything to people. It's not just velocity of money being churned around in the introverse. It's so impressive.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. Everyone in this photo, everyone involved in this project will remember this. You know, this is kind of a hallmark of their careers and something that they'll have on their resumes and they'll talk about all the time about their achievements here. Yeah, it's a big deal. So continuing on, that was the highlight, you know, so it's going to get a little bit more dull from here. But we've got a few more years of construction and a lot of really big deals to come, so a lot of interesting stuff yet to come. But tonight, that was really the highlight. Moving on now to our pipeline projects, our other pipeline projects. We talked a little bit about PLW 1.3, that's our pipeline project in South Hillsborough area, near Rosedale Road and 209th. We completed all of our 30-inch TBWD turnout pipe, which is along Rosedale Road and down 209th Avenue, so that work is done. Including the southwest 209th Road closure, the crossing to get across 209th, I'll talk about that in a second. We started installation of the Farmington meter vault on the other side of 209th. We have our 66-inch pipe installation from Rosedale Road north. And the Butter Nut Creek Crossing micro tunneling is 60% complete, so moving right along on this project. So 209th, this is a photo standing on 209th Avenue looking north, I believe. And it is, so it's near Farmington. And so this is, last weekend, we were able to close, or the weekend before, we were able to close, completely close 209th Avenue to affect this crossing. And we were allowed to close it for the entire weekend, so Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. But this crew got in there, got the work done, and got it buttoned up Saturday. So we were able to open up a whole day early. And the work again was done safely and properly, and they did an excellent job. And not only is this being done in the middle of the night, with the road closed and everything else like that, but you can see all the power lines immediately above the workers here and the excavator with the long reach and everything. There's a lot of danger associated with the work that's going on. But it was all done completely safely, efficiently, and they got it done early, it was a great job. This is just one photo of the Butter Nut Creek Crossing, I'll have a lot more interesting photos to show you of this. So this one on the raw water facility, that was a pipe ram. So that was, as you saw, a hammer on one side of the creek, hammering the pipe across underneath the creek to get to the other side. This is a micro tunnel, so there's a tunneling machine that's pulling the pipe through and advancing along the way. But you know, in the coming presentations, I'll have a similar breakout video for you on this one where they get across to the other side to the receiving pit. But they're making progress on this one, like I said, 60% complete on this one. Two new projects to talk to you about tonight. MPE 1.1, that's our pipeline project that we're doing in partnership with the City of Beaverton in Western Boulevard. And so that one, we're just getting started, we had a pre-construction meeting on May 13. We have erosion control, initial clearing and grubbing is underway, franchise utility relocation and utility potholing is underway. So if you drive down Western Boulevard, you see the beginnings of construction taking place. And it'll just get more messy from there. Notable topics on this project, we have a shared field trailer with the City of Beaverton that is about to be set up, is going to be set up in July. No claims on this one thankfully so far, some delivery challenges that we're working through, including steel pipe and butterfly valve fabrication schedule. So we're working through them. And one other project to tell you about tonight, again, another new project. This one is a really tough one, MPE 1.2, you see on the map there where it goes, from Southwest Allen down Shoals Ferry Road through the narrow part of Shoals Ferry Road, across Hall, across 217, and then continuing on down Shoals Ferry Road. And then there's one spur that'll go down Hall Boulevard towards Olson. On this one, we had a pre-construction meeting held on May 26th. We're reviewing a lot of submittals and RFIs and doing utility coordination. On this one, external coordination, we held a meeting with PGE to begin coordination of the work around overhead lines. No claims, delivery challenge, we're still acquiring the staging area for this project. But that's almost in the rearview here, we're almost done with that, so we're going to finish that just barely on time. And I think that is the end of my presentation, are there any questions tonight?
Questions from Commissioners? Thank you very much, Mr. Kraska, always fascinating and love the pictures, best of all.
My pleasure, thank you.
CEO, Mr. Hickman, do you have anything else?
I do have one other thing, another late-breaking item, but not bad, actually good news. So we have been working with the SDAO. And we have been calling our state legislators frantically here for the last few days. In part because the 1.6 billion that the state got, or 1.5 billion the state got, it was being all awarded to cities and counties and special districts were being left out. And we got notice today that there is a bill that is getting approved that is $6 million for utility assistance. So this we can use to help our customers, so that's great news. And you know, granted, it's not 1.5 billion, but we'll take our sliver. So that's all I have, and I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, that is very good news indeed, I mean, 6 million, it's like you say, it's not 1.5. But to be, to get something for special districts instead of being ignored is huge. And our customers, I know, will be very appreciated of the additional assistance because a lot of them are in difficult situations. So turning now to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. We will go in alphabetical order, starting with Commissioner Doan, if you will.
Okay, there was a work session. There was the meeting on the backflow preventers. That was very interesting and I learned things that I didn't already know. There was the Aloha Business Association meeting, which was somehow managed to complete without audio. And then there's tonight's meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan, turning to Commissioner Duggan, your meetings attended?
Okay, on June 1st, I also attended our work session where we got updates, WWSS and other updates. On June 2nd, I attended the Regional Water Providers Commission Board Meeting where we elected new officers for the consortium. Mayor Walters of West Lynn asked to be Vice President. And our president is from Twolleton, Bridget Brooks is the new chair. I avoided another stint, thank goodness, because thanks to Kerry and some maneuverings behind the scenes, I was able to stay on the executive committee and then not have to, again, do another stint as Chair of the Regional Providers Consortium. On June 3rd was the regular meeting and executive session, the Willamette Water Supply meeting. On June 8th was Washington County CPO Number One meeting where Clean Water Services made a presentation, their latest presentation. And they talked about partnerships with the local cities, but the water district wasn't mentioned. I was going to make a point of bringing that up at the end, but I thought, oh no, that's pretty cheap. Even though when they were talking about rate increases and talking about One Water, it seemed like they were focusing only on Clean Water Services and not bringing up that we joint bill with them. Again, that's my own little pet peeve and I didn't want to rain on their parade. They had a very good presentation about a project that will affect the Twolton Hills Nature Park. They're going in and having to remove quite a few trees to replace and upgrade a trunk sewer line that goes from the nature park to the north toward Light Rail Tracks and Reesers Fine Foods and Nike. They're having to do that through the nature park because sewers run along the lowest parts of the ground and are fairly close to creeks historically, so they're having to replace that pipe. Last Thursday, I met with our district coordinator to get the WWSS backlog of documents signed. And then tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan, I do not think that I would have been able to take the high road as you did. I would have rained on Clean Water Services Parade. I very much appreciate everything they do for the watershed. But I very much do not appreciate that they don't recognize our role.
Yeah, that kind of stuck in my craw.
It's one of those things.
I thought I'd vent at this meeting, but they did an excellent job in describing the project for the nature park. So I got to give them kudos for that, for sure, and their general discussion of their mission for Washington County.
Nope, I understand where you're coming from on that and I appreciate it. Commissioner Sanders, how about your meetings attended?
Thank you, on the 25th, I attended the Final Budget Committee meeting. On the 1st, our board work session. And then on the 8th, we had our Willamette River Water Coalition Meeting, which I'm the representative for the district for. And some of the points of that meeting, first of all, Joel Carey is taking over as the Director of the, I'm not going to use the right words. Joel Carey will be the registered agent representing Twolton Valley Water District. Or Twolton Valley Water District is the representative agent. And Joel will be representing the water district in the organization. That was a lot, a lot of words for a simple statement. But anyway, Joel is going to be leading these meetings now. And then Joel also was the highlight of the entire day. There was some discussion on the Army Corps Basin Feasibility Study, which everybody may or may not know that in the fall of last year, it was approved after a decade plus. So that's starting to go underway. And then there was a short discussion about sort of the closure of working with Oregon's Water Resource Department on reporting for withdrawals at the Willamette Intake Facility. Making sure that each organization was being properly allocated their amount under the WRWC's permits. And then I have tonight's meeting, so that would be the final one.
Thank you very much. Turning to Commissioner Schmidt, your turn.
Yes, on the 1st, I also attended the work session. And I remember flag guidance and ductile line and pipe issues as being two issues that came up. On the 8th, I had a meeting with Tom and Bernice about the agenda of this evening. And tonight's regular board, and that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt, and my meetings are going to sound a lot like other people's meetings. On the 25th, we had the formal budget committee meeting where the proposed budget was accepted and recommended to the board for adoption. On June 1st, we had the work session where we talked about board appointments, the Willamette Water Supply, and the water rate schedule for what we're going to do for public hearings, for water rate hearings. On the 8th, I met with the CEO and the board vice president to do agenda planning. And of course, tonight, the 16th, the board meeting. And those are all of my meetings attended. So do we have any topics to be raised by Commissioners that are not on the agenda? I'm hearing the sounds of silence, so I will move on to the next item. And that would be, we have actually two public hearings tonight. The first one is Item 1A, which is to consider. which is to consider adopting Resolution 06-21, which is a resolution adopting the budget and making appropriations for the Twalton Valley Water District for the 2021-23 biennium. First, we will hear a report from our Budget Officer, Paul Matthews, and then I'll open the public hearing in accordance with ORS Chapter 294. Anyone who wishes to offer testimony in support or in opposition to the budget will be given five minutes unless an extension is, is, uh, excuse me, unless an extension is granted by the board. Should three or more people testify on the same topic, each person will be limited to three minutes. Following public testimony, I will close the hearing and the board will consider action on the item. So, staff report from our CFO and Budget Officer, Paul Matthews.
Well, good evening, President Bagnell, Commissioners, and thank you. Uh, I have nothing as exciting as, uh, Mr. Kraska had, unfortunately. And to be honest with you, everything I'm gonna present tonight, you've seen, uh, two times before. So this will be your third time to see this information. Well, this is the formal public hearing, and, uh, it's an important part of our public process and that's why we're proceeding. But this is information that, uh, you have seen before. Uh, we do follow Oregon Local Budget Law, and as, uh, President Bagnell mentioned, that is in ORS 294. It really provides that standardized process and ensures that the public has an opportunity to participate and that public input is, is received, uh, in this process. Uh, Budget Committee, uh, members met and, uh, they gave us a green light, approved our budget. And of course, compliance with the budget law is mandatory. So where do we stand in this process? We started, uh, early on as staff by preparing, uh, requested budgets at the department level and, uh, for the various programs. Uh, we then, uh, Budget Officer, I, with the help of everyone in the district, uh, prepared the proposed budget, consolidated that into one place. We presented that proposed budget to the Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee then approved the budget. Uh, actually, in this case, they approved the budget as, as, uh, proposed and then forwarded that to the board for your adoption tonight. So we start with the requested budget, go to a proposed budget, and then approve budget, and now we're asking for this to be, to be adopted. Uh, just to kind of walk through the timeline, we started back in January, uh, of 2020, where we presented to the board some district initiatives and, uh, issues related to our financial plan, the financial strategies that we wanted to, to pursue, that would provide the context for the budget itself and provide staff direction in developing the, uh, the requested and then proposed budget. Uh, we met, uh, March 17th with the board and we presented financial strategies that would, uh, provide the resources, uh, to fund, uh, the district's activities. You might remember that in lieu of a Budget Committee Tour, which we would traditionally do, on March 23rd, we had a Budget Committee Workshop, where each of the departments gave an overview of what they're doing, essentially a show and tell. Hopefully, when we're outside the COVID, uh, period, we'll be able to resume, uh, the Budget Committee Tour, because I find that to be, um, kind of an enjoyable event. I think it's very helpful for the Budget Committee members to see a lot of the capital projects that we're engaged in. Then on April 18th, the Engineering and Operations Customer Service Water Supply Program, uh, presented their, their, um, uh, information, their plans to the entire Budget Committee in a workshop. The 22nd, we picked up the rest of the district, um, and, uh, talked about the joint venture funds as well. And then, um, on May 19th, the Board of Commissioners actually approved, uh, the district's financial plan, again, consistent with the budget itself, and, uh, that was, uh, an important part of our process, of having our financial plan in place. And on May 25th, the Budget Committee met formally and, uh, considered the proposed budget and, uh, approved it and passed it on to the Board of Commissioners for adoption, and that's where we are tonight. Tom Hickman, our CEO, gave a broad overview of, of where TVWD is as we went through the budget process. And so I'm gonna just highlight some of these things quickly as we pass through this presentation. Uh, historically, TVWD had been a suburban water, uh, provider, and that was early phases in the district where we served customers largely by delivering water that we had purchased wholesale or received from our partnership in the Joint Water Commission. Uh, we have a complex transmission distribution system we have to manage because of the size of the district and frankly, uh, the elevation and the topography that we have here within, uh, the Twalton Valley. So we, we managed that, uh, and we were preparing then for the, uh, WWSP construction phase, which is where we are tonight. You saw the presentation from Dave Kraska. Right now, TVWD is oriented towards, uh, the construction of the WWSP and absorbing that infrastructure into, uh, our organization so that we can manage that once it's prepared. And we're now preparing for the third phase, which is once the construction of that is done and TVWD assumes its position as regional, uh, operator, and that'll be the regional operations phase where we operate this for the benefit of, of our customers as well as, uh, our partners. So we're in transition and, and we are in unfamiliar financial, uh, situation. Normally, when I make these presentations, I've been able to say over the past, um, 10, nine years that, uh, TVW is in a strong financial position. Well, I can say that we are in a strong financial position still, and that's largely because of the financial policies and the financial management that the board has offered. Having said that, uh, we had to take some corrective actions because of COVID and a slowing of water sales. So we found ourselves with some, uh, what I would say is unfamiliar financial situations. Uh, water sales down, revenues down, STCs were down, uh, collection problems were increasing. Uh, but we did have some things that we took corrective action on. We've, uh, been careful with our operating expenses, and so we've managed those. Uh, our partnerships are improving and, uh, staff morale continues to be strong in spite of COVID-19. But on balance, uh, this is somewhat of an unfamiliar situation for the district. We've had some successes during the budget period during the current biennium. Uh, we've implemented the new governance for the WWSS, and we've stood up the Willamette Water Supply System. And, uh, that, that's been a, a lot of work, but it's been an important part. And, uh, congratulations to Dave Kraska and his team for, for pulling us through that. Uh, we re-executed our WIFI loan, uh, got a lower interest rate, moved it from the 2.39% down to a 1.35%. We learned how to operate under a pandemic. Um, March 16th, we send our, most of our employees home and to do their jobs and to operate the district remotely. Took a lot of ingenuity effort and imagination from our employees, and I'm proud to say that, uh, that they did. They really pulled through for us and were able to operate safely in a pandemic and keep the work done, uh, getting done. We've made progress in our DEI initiative. We have a lot more to do on diversity, equity, inclusion, but we have made progress on that, and that's an important initiative, uh, that, uh, Thomas challenged us with in the coming biennium. And, uh, we continue to do development of the leadership team, and, uh, that is gonna be an ongoing task, and you'll hear more about that as we move forward. Challenges, obviously the pandemic. Uh, that, that hit every, every business, not, you, TVWD uniquely, but it did hit us. Uh, revenue shortfalls resulting from that, as well as, uh, a wetter summer. Uh, and our partnerships are challenging. You know, there's an old saying, you can go faster alone, further together, and we've chosen to go further together. But that means we have to maintain our partnerships. Implementing CIS, we've given the CIS team a very short implementation period. We've pushed them hard to implement the CIS during that period of time, but it's a big ambitious plan and, uh, we need to work through those challenges. Uh, as well as, uh, project risk and uncertainty. Those things continue, uh, whether we're talking about our in-district CIP, we're talking about CIS, or we're talking about the WWSS and the WIFI projects. So those are the challenges that the district has. Uh, and we operate under the, the strategic goals that were adopted back in 2012. These were taken to the board in 2012. These are our desired results. We call them desired results because we wanna focus on the outcome, the results, rather than just the goals themselves. But a lot of people would call these strategic goals, objectives, what have you. We have five, they were adopted by the board. So as we go through our strategic plan and develop the budget consistent with that strategic plan, we focus on these five, uh, desired results. That the water supply meets community needs and expectations, the community is confident in our water service and employees, that we are good stewards of our financial resources, that we are good stewards of our natural resources, and we are good stewards of our own assets and resources. That includes the people as well as the fiscal assets. So those are the things that the district focuses on and has kept us busy during this current biennium. You might remember that we had six, uh, strategic district initiatives, uh, in the last biennium, and, uh, presented here are those six initiatives and how they line up with the, uh, with the district's desired results. Uh, first is the WWSS, and you heard a report from Dave on that earlier. Uh, second was the debt program. We needed to stand up a debt program to fund the WWSS and to maintain the district's financial strength. A strategic communication plan, the CIS project, district resiliency program, and a human capital strategy. Those were on our list for the current biennium that we are completing. And presented here is a scorecard of where we landed on those initiatives. Uh, the program, it's ongoing and it won't be complete until June of 2026. Um, probably there a little bit after that to wind the program down. But that is managed in the status we have there, it's on schedule, and you heard a briefing on that tonight. The debt program, I say that it's done. Now, we're not done issuing debt, but standing up the program, getting those basic mechanisms, uh, in place that we can issue debt. That is done, and so we're calling that done. Strategic Communication Program, still a couple of things to do on that, and you're gonna hear tonight about the initiative that we have to get surveys and more information to help us tailor our communications with, uh, our customers as well as internally. Uh, the CIS, as I talked, that's an ongoing project, and we gave, uh, the team a very tight timeline of February 2022. Uh, and, uh, of course, uh, quality is more important than schedule in this case. And, uh, so we're, we're paying close attention to the quality on that and that it, uh, has some things that are slowing it down, namely COVID. How do you do a CIS project when you're implementing it and the consultants and, uh, the vendors aren't able to be on site with you? It tends to slow things down. Uh, we have a district resiliency program that is complete, as well as the human capital strategy. Uh, so that was for 2020, uh, for the current biennium, 2019-21. Where do we stand in the future biennium? Well, the district went through a strategic funding initiative, and we had to do this slightly in a different way because of COVID. Uh, but it started with developing a bottoms-up SWOT analysis, strength, weakness, opportunities and threat. Worked with all of our staffs, brought that to the leadership team, and we then worked from the top down, looking at those as, uh, the, the results from our staff, as well as the, um, our own analysis. Uh, and that created our top-down. We then identified major themes from that SWOT analysis, things that were driving us in the future. And we proposed specific initiatives, again, that are consistent with those desired results, but that address the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that we got from the SWOT analysis. We proposed those initiatives, evaluated them, uh, with their alignment to the desired results, and then we did present those initiatives, uh, to the board and, as well as through the Budget Committee process, through, uh, to the Budget Committee. Uh, quick recap, what are those major themes? Human investment. We identified that, that we need to prepare employees to be successful in meeting the future requirements of the district as we transition yet to, uh, a, a third stage, which is that operational stage. We need to lay the groundwork and our human investment strategy is part of that. Intergovernmental relations, the same thing. We need to tool that up, uh, to improve our relationships with our partners and other regional governments. Business intelligence, we wanna improve the planning district's ability to respond by developing actual information from disparate sources of data. We learned, uh, through this pandemic, how important it was to be able to get information, uh, that we hadn't needed before and present that in a meaningful way. So that's one of our, uh, strategic, uh, or one of our major themes as well. Efficiency through modernization, how can we improve the service levels that we provide our customers? Uh, and do that either lower cost or, uh, at, uh, just improve it at our current cost. And then the last one, the last is to finish the work that we'd undertaken. So we need to keep our eye on the ball. We need to successfully land the CIS project. We need to successfully land the, um, uh, WWSS and continue with our strategic communications program. So as we look at, um, uh, the specific project initiatives that we have here, uh, and we've talked about this, uh, with you at the Budget Committee, as well as when we're developing our strategic, uh, fina-, uh, um, financial strategies. Uh, the first one that we have there is the mission, vision, values. We'll talk about each one of these in steps. Uh, class compensation study, government affairs, business data, decision data, modernization, and our existing initiatives. Shown here is how they align with our desired results. So the strategic initiatives that we have that are funded by this budget align with the district's desired results. Again, going back to what was adopted in 2012. Uh, you saw these slides, and you might remember at the Budget Committee Mem-, meeting, we had each of the staff members walk through and discuss these. So I'm not gonna take too much time to do that here tonight, unless there are questions. And of course, we can direct those to, uh, our subject matter experts that are also at the meeting. But essentially, what you see here is the district's mission, vision, values. This is the effort to frankly tune up the districts. It's, the current mission, vision, values are, uh, more than a decade old, and we wanna make sure that we, uh, maintain alignment and give ourselves that vision of how we're working in the future and to affect the culture of TVWD and continue to implement the DEI initiative. Now, if there are any questions or you want me to stop, I'm not gonna be able to detect that. So please speak up if I need to slow down. I'm trying to go through this as quickly as I can, but I don't wanna pass by questions that folks may have. Uh, conduct the class comp study. This is part of getting our, uh, prepared for the workforce of the future. Uh, we're in transition. We need to be prepared to be at the management agency, the WWSS and WIFI. And the class comp study is an opportunity for us to align our pay structures, modernize them to be consistent with the current market and to be consistent with the district's future requirements. Governmental affairs, we wanna improve our relationships with other local governments. Uh, we wanna develop better, uh, information on how TVW's efforts affect our partners and our customers, uh, through surveys and other mechanisms. We wanna make sure that we have more information there, and we wanna more fully integrate our communication functions in, uh, our governmental affairs. And our business decision, essentially, we wanna be able to improve the decision-making that we have as management, reduce, uh, parent data inconsistencies that we have. I personally struggle with this as I pull information out of different systems, compare them. They should be giving me the same results, and sometimes they don't. So we wanna be able to do that and embrace technology that will reduce the cost of us doing, doing business. Modernization, the same thing, wanna reduce the cost of maintaining or improving our service levels. Uh, you might remember that Andrew Carlstrom talked about the AMI strategy. Uh, Kerry Pack talked about, uh, Project Management Center and, uh, and to mature our asset management strategies. So those are the things we wanna do to modernize. And finally, completing our existen-, existing initiatives. Uh, we are requesting two new staff positions and we are, uh, reducing three other staff positions. So on net, we have one reduction in staff members, but we are requesting a new, uh, SCADA staff member to, uh, help, uh, in the SCADA efforts. That's the, uh, controls that we use for our water system. And we are asking for one additional waterworks operator. Now, I've gotta go through the most tedious part of my presentation tonight, and that is to walk through the, uh, proposed budget by fund. And this is an important part because actually, these are the, uh, numbers that you will be adopting. First, I wanna talk about the key infrastructure investments. And again, this will be the third time that you've seen this information, but this is pulling together, uh, the district's, uh, capital improvements. And I'm telling you, right now, the district is in a huge investment cycle, and we are focusing largely on, uh, the WWSS and building that out, but also some very critical infrastructure that we have at the district, uh, that is managed, uh, through, uh, the Chief of Engineers' Office. Uh, if we look at a, uh, our six-year CIP, you can see that, uh, in the next two years, you know, we have a lot going on. Uh, the second year of this biennium and fiscal year '23 will be the peak of our spend. Um, and fiscal year '24 will, again, outside this biennium, but be another major investment period, uh, for the district. I'm not gonna go through this. Let's just kick on and move on to our funds. TVW is not proposing any changes in our fund. The fund structure is gonna remain the same. Uh, we have the same nine funds that, uh, we've had in the past, so no change there. And, uh, this is the appropriations that we have by each of the funds. And of course, this is, uh, the third time that you've seen this slide as well, and it is in the budget document itself. So moving on, the appropriations that we have, uh, in the approved budget, so this is the budget that was approved by the Budget Committee, uh, for the general fund. So this is our, our primary fund where we do our operations. Uh, it contains all of our personal services, our budget in the general fund. Uh, purchased water and power is about 51.5% of our material and services budget within the general fund. Um, we have, uh, resources that we transfer to the cap reserve fund to fund capital projects and our investments, and includes special payments, which are the appropriations we use to pay for the right-of-way fees that we collect on behalf of the cities of Beaverton, Tigard, and Hillsborough. So the total appropriations, uh, you can see in this table, uh, and the total resources they match, so we have a balanced budget for the general fund at the appropriation levels that are identified there for personal service. that are identified there for personal services, material services, capital outlay, special payments, interfund transfers and contingency. Moving on to the capital improvement fund. The capital improvement fund is where the bulk of our capital improvements are made. And the appropriation that we're asking there, you can see a significant increase as we continue on our investment in, in the district in infrastructure. And it is a balanced budget. Again, our appropriations and resources will come from TVWD, primarily out of our capital reserve fund and from our other partners. Other partners are Clean Water Services contribution to this, the CIS project. That's what we're assuming there. And the requirements again are all for capital outlay. So we're funding about $380 million of capital outlay. The capital reserve fund, this is a fund that receives money from the, from the general fund, as well as has its own fund balances carried over from prior years. And our system development charges are actually deposited into this fund. The primary use of these funds or the only use of these funds is to fund the interfund transfer, which is funds that are transferred to the capital improvement fund to pay for those capital improvements. The resources, beginning fund balance, we're estimating to be about $56.5 million. Interest income, we're forecasting that to decline as the balances decline and as interest rates decline. But we're expecting about $431,000 in interest income contributions, which are largely the system development charges and the interfund transfer from the general fund to help fund that, as well as transfers from a bond proceeds fund, which would be the WIFIA money reimbursing the district for its capital expenditures. Requirements, interfund transfer, and we have a small amount of unappropriated fund balance we anticipate having in the capital reserve fund as we close out the biennium. Debt proceeds fund is where the district will receive its debt proceeds. We're anticipating, well, we're not anticipating, but the proposed budget is to fund $226,500,000 of transfers to the capital reserve fund. And that is the, the WIFIA funding. This account, this fund accounts for the proceeds of borrowing. We anticipate the WIFIA draws during the biennium. We will only take those WIFIA draws as needed though, because once we take those, we start to incur capitalized interest charges against that. And that's why, for example, in this biennium, we had $25 million budgeted. But because we didn't need it, we have refrained from taking that money in order to save the district money in the long term. Customer emergency assistance fund is the fund that is used to fund our customer emergency assistance program. We're looking at a significant increase here to help our customers as we continue to have larger rate increases. And frankly, as the COVID-19 issues continue to resolve themselves, we want to have some flexibility to assist customers in need. Couple of things are important to know about this fund. It is used entirely to fund the support to our customer assistance program. Support, our customers are qualified by a third party. We get money from customer donations, from donations from commissioners as well as staff and from funds budgeted by the district. All the interests that are earned on the fund balances stay within that fund and are used entirely to fund the assistance to customers. We're requesting $250,000 per year to assist customers with the emergency needs. And we're working closely with Clean Water Services so that we have a matching effort there to make sure that customers are, both water and sewer customers are treated in a fair, fair way. And that essentially we're not using water funds to cover the assistance to wastewater customers. So presented here, we're requesting $531,000 roughly for material and services, which is to pay for the third party qualifications of our customers, as well as to fund the, the, the assistance to individual customers, which would be passed directly on to the district and reduce their water bills directly. Okay, the water supply system fund, this fund is, is for our Fund 45, which is the large system that we hear about from Mr. Krask with all the cool pictures that I'm jealous of. In event, we have some material and services budget there, which covers cost of running the water supply system that will not be capitalized. And then capital outlay is the major, the major element there. We do have a small contingency. Now, this came up during the budget committee, so I think it's worth repeating here during this public hearing that the capital outlays that you see there in those projects, we actually have some project contingencies in there. So the contingency that you see listed here is only for the material and services budget. You might say, well, where are the people? Why are there no people budgeted within this fund? And that's because the people that are supporting the water supply system are actually budgeted in the general fund. And then we charge this fund for their services, either through capital outlay or material services, depending on the nature of the work that they are doing. The water supply shown here, TVWD is going to be contributed about 243 million of that. About 212 million will be coming from our partners to fund their share of the construction project. And you can see what the requirements are there. Material services, about 2.3 million. Capital outlay, that's the real bunch during the, during the biennium of about $452 million. So the large investment. The water intake facilities fund, that is the, the smaller element down at the water treatment plant that is owned by the six partners rather than the water supply system portion, which is owned by the three partners. Shown here is the expected, the, the budget that we have for material services, about $1.1 million, capital outlay, 6.5 million, and the contingency of $107,000. Sources and uses or resources, TVWD will be considered, will be providing about 3.5 million. And the other partners will be putting up about 4.2 million. And you can see that we then have a balanced budget for the water intake facilities fund. It'll cover the material services, capital outlay and contingency. Same thing here, the personnel services are provided within the general fund and come to this fund as a material services budget item. Willamette River Water Coalition is the, manages the water rights of the limit. The proposed budget is actually going down this year. And that's because the WRWC, as it's called, will not be spending as much on the reauthorization projects they had in the past. And so the budget is somewhat reduced. TVW is expected to pick about $50,000 of the cost. The other partners, about $68,000. And in this case, the expenditures will be all material and services and contingency. We have no capital outlay in that fund. So in summary, when we pull all this together, and of course, you saw this slide during the budget committee meeting, our total appropriations that we have are about 1.641 million. It's important to note that a lot of that is transfers of money back and forth. So there's a fair amount of double counting. We'll have personnel services in the general fund and it'll show up as a capital outlay or material services in another fund. We'll appropriate money in the cap reserve fund to transfer to various funds to cover the bills. So there's a bit of that, but it is a rather sizable budget. And, and, and bottom line is this is what is needed to fund the priorities of the district. So in summary, taking it back where we started, a little unfamiliar financial position, but working with the board, we adopted financial strategy and, and approved a financial plan that will help us make sure that we're fiscally responsible. We're going to continue our large infrastructure project. The budget that we have, it funds the initiatives that are based on the strategic plan I described and those major themes that we discussed. Maintains current service levels with limited edition of the strategic initiatives. This isn't a budget that grows quite a bit of what we're doing. It's focused primarily on current service levels and large infrastructure investment. It recognizes the impacts of the pandemic on our customers by funding, increasing our funding of bad debt expense, as well as our customer emergency assistance program and funds district's infrastructure investment and funds just the district's transition to becoming the management agency for the WWSS and the WIF. So with that, long discussion, answer any questions that you might have. And then President Bagnall have a recommendation slide after this. And then I do have after the budget process, you're done with that. I do have a bundle of slides on the district's financial performance. So I'd like to come back after you're done with that and see if there are any questions about that, those slides I've included. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Paul. Are there questions from commissioners? And as our CFO mentioned, this is the, the third time through all of this material for the board, because we have been meeting with our budget committee to go over all of these numbers. And so a lot of this discussion happens before the public meeting. Are there questions? If not, I will open the public hearing on this item, 1A, the adoption of the budget. If there is anyone who would like to address the board on this issue, this is your chance. Is there any testimony in support of the budget? Not hearing a clamor, is there any testimony in opposition? Okay, again, not hearing any clamor, then I shall close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 0621, which is a resolution adopting the budget and making appropriations for the Tooleton Valley Water District for the 2021-23 biennium?
This is Commissioner Don, I move to accept the motion.
This is.
Adopt the resolution, sorry.
This is Dick, I will second that.
So Commissioner Don has moved and Commissioner Schmidt has seconded that we adopt the budget. I would like to ask the district recorder to provide a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That is unanimous and the motion passes.
So President Bagnall?
I know, we have a financial report before moving to the next item. CFO Paul Matthews.
And I'm going to be very brief on this. This is what we've done for several months where I've included the slide deck in your packet. And I can answer any questions, but I did want to deliver just a bit of, of a highlight here, which is we are seeing in, in the past few months, what I would say is, is a stabilizing of our revenues and actually an improvement. So I'm happy to report, things aren't back to where they were, but that things are strengthening. And I think part of that is, is driven by the more recent dry and warm weather. But we're actually seeing this going back into water that we were selling in March and April and May. So there's a bit of good news and I just wanted to highlight that. With that, I would answer any questions that you might have of the packet or we can move on to the next agenda item, so no questions.
Thank you. That is good news that it has finally seemed to have bottomed out and gotten more stable. That, that it's good news. Are there questions from commissioners? Okay, hearing none. We will move to our second public hearing of the evening. And that is item 1B, acting as the local contract review board, consider adopting Resolution 07-21, which is a resolution declaring an exemption from competitive bidding for the Taylor's Ferry Reservoir Replacements and Pump Station Project and authorize proceeding with a construction manager slash general contractor contract. And we will have a staff report from Andrew Barrett.
Members of the board, thank you very much. I'm going to take control here. I'm going to be presenting on the Taylor's Ferry Reservoir and Pump Station Replacement Project. As Commissioner already stated, it's going to be a request for exemption from public bidding, which means we're going to not go the traditional design bill, design bid build, but instead look to hire a CMGC contractor for moving this project forward. Some of the items I'm going to talk about on this project, and I'll try to be quick as we're getting towards the end of the night, is going to be kind of the project background, existing conditions for the site, our proposed site plan, some of the alternative delivery evaluations, the results, and then request board action. So for those who don't know off the top of their head or want to get re-familiar with the Taylor's Ferry reservoirs and the pump, the future pump station, that's actually located in Metzger portion of our district. You can see some of the connection points to the district system. You can see the star that shows where the project site is. And 2026, when the water supply comes on, is going to require some changes to the existing system. And I want to hit next year to see the animation that the Portland water supply will be turned off and we'll be using water supply, which actually impacts this site. I'll get to that in just a sec. So here's some project backgrounds or some project background. Again, this is the old Metzger headquarters is on the right part of that, that property. It's kind of a rectangular building. There's a concrete reservoir in the middle of the site. And then on the left side, there's a steel reservoir. This is kind of an interesting site where nothing here meets our current seismic resilience standards. A lot of the site piping is very old. It's lead jointed cast iron. It's not seismically resilient. It's the only water storage reservoirs in the 498 zone and it serves roughly 3,100 residents. Let's see. Now, the interesting thing about this zone, it's actually, the, I guess the tanks will supply water to the 498 pressure zone. But when we move off the Portland supply, you can see where the connections are. There is two areas that are shaded on the map that essentially will not be supplied by the city of Portland and they will require a, a pump station for us to actually service those areas. The current reservoirs that are sitting out there can't supply water to that area. We did spend time looking to see if we could maintain the connection to the, the connections to the city of Portland. Unfortunately, you know, there's different disinfections and there's other water qualities, problems that would be very bad for the district if we tried to mix it at this location. So we're going to have to move to doing a pump station. The project site, as you can see, is outlined on the image on the right. So let's see here. Looking at the existing conditions of the site, we have the steel reservoir. There was a report that was done in 2012. A lot of this has been cleaned up, but that's a picture of the inside of the steel reservoir. The report did note that up to 25% of the metal thickness essentially is gone. The concrete tank, it's heavily cracked. There's a liner installed in it. Again, neither of these are up to current seismic standards. The same thing with the lead jointed pipe. And it's kind of hard to see, but the bottom photo there actually shows a bunch of pits in an area of piping that we, we exposed for the Metzger North-South Pipeline. And the existing building in the Metzger shop, it is in need of significant repair to be able to be occupied. So we started looking at all of the work that is needed out there, especially in advance of what we're going to need for the water to connect. And we actually prepared a conceptual report that has us replacing both reservoirs with two, two 1.75 million gallon seismically resilient reservoirs. This will remove some of the storage that is unusable. This will remove some of the storage that is unusable in the steel tank and also shift both reservoirs up to the south of the site. Unfortunately, doing that, it's good for storage for the system, but it will require us to remove the Metzger headquarters. And again, I kind of mentioned on the, mentioned this, but getting off the Portland supply requires us to install a pump station to do this. Land use has already been applied for and approved. And work needs to get underway by July 2023. Otherwise, the land use conditions will expire. We'll have to either extend those or let them go. So the, the hard part here is we have an existing site. It's very small. As I mentioned, there's a lot of piping out there that's not in good shape. What I haven't really shared yet is we have to keep at least one of these reservoirs up and operational at all times to do this work. Additionally, the site piping has to be, has to be operational in a way while we're trying to construct new tanks, all new onsite piping, a pump station, which gets to be very difficult. And we start looking at how to construct something like this. Really, the best way to approach this and not create problems that are related to cost and scheduling is to get contractor input early on, which points us to alternative delivery, which also goes to my next slide. So why use alternative delivery? It's very good for complex projects. You get that contractor buy-in that I was, I was mentioning, where we have to have operators be able to access the site. We have to be able to replace the site and build what we ultimately want and minimize reconstruction, additional costs, construction sequencing. It also helps us very much produce a teamed approach to the project delivery where everyone would understand the scope of the project and the goals of the project, as opposed to traditional design bid build, where oftentimes for more complex projects, you can get into adversarial relationships, and they don't always build projects that well. So it does help us also meet additional, additional project timelines. So we looked at four alternatives. We really almost looked at five. The four alternative project deliveries that we looked at were the traditional design bid build, CMGC, progressive design build, and a fixed price design build. Each one has its pros and each one has its cons. A lot of the pros for these, a lot of the pros for these can be summarized in the next slide or two, but you do get that contractor buy-in. You get the long lead time for ordering items that are difficult to come by, like pumps. You can split out the work into multiple phases to make construction easier, but also allow operations on stat, onsite. Again, in, in situations where you have a small, compact, compact site, getting contractor buy-in for the approach of work is, is always a good thing. We did spend some time looking at best value. Wasn't included in the evaluation. We did look at it, but we felt that the contractor input portion sort of disqualified that for moving forward with the, the selection. So again, in that the packet I provided, the CMGC or the scoring for the alternative deliveries is in there. CMGC, it did rise to the top. And if we go forward with CMGC, we would hire based on a combination of price and qualifications. We already have a selection underway for a designer, and this would allow us to move the contractor selection forward. The designer currently is, that we're in negotiations with is Murray Smith. One thing this, this approach to project delivery helps with is reducing the amount of risk and unknowns and uncertainties on projects. You can have the contractor actually start some work early to help meet project timelines, but also do some work to discover things on site. So let's see. So we had to do some outreach to make sure that we were meeting some of the legal requirements for the competitive bidding exemption. One of them is to discourage favoritism. And we did that by actually reaching out to, reaching out to the contracting community. And we heard back from 10 folks, which I actually heard from an 11 today that said that they would be interested in preparing proposals for this, this type of project delivery. Let me see. So the district is going to plan to use the in-house counsel for its legal needs for this matter. We should be able to use the, or will be able to use Murray Smith as an owner's rep to help ensure that we are getting fair pricing and that we are meeting the requirements of the, of the administrative rules. So one of the good things about this method, it does allow us to set a schedule and potentially beat the schedule or, or adjust the schedule as needed. And tentative, tentatively, we are looking at July 2024 if we move forward with approval today for the project being delivered. With the exception of funding, right now, we are doing our best to get grant funding or potentially WIFIA loans. We're looking into that, which might require the project deadline to smooth up, sorry, speed up or slow down. So with that being said, I'm going to open the floor to questions. I know I went kind of fast, but I'm more than willing to answer questions or talk about concerns you guys may have.
Are there questions from board members? I would like to say that I am personally delighted to hear that we have 11 different firms interested in proposing on this project. I, I think that's very encouraging and, and, and should deliver us a good outcome.
Thank you. Yes, we do work to encourage competition. So we, we look forward to getting proposals and figuring out who is going to provide the best competitive value for the district.
Okay. With that, I am opening the public hearing on Item 1B. I have been advised that we do have one member of the public attending this meeting. And if you'd like to testify on this item, now's your chance. So is there any testimony in support? Is there any testimony in opposition? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 07-21, which is a resolution declaring an exemption from competitive bidding for the Taylor's Ferry Reservoir Replacements and Pump Station Project and authorize proceeding with a construction manager slash general contractor contract?
This is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
And this is Todd Sanders, I second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Duggan to approve, and Commissioner Sanders to second. So I would like to ask our district recorder to please provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Now, we are finished with our public, with the public hearing portion of tonight's budget. So we move back to regular business. And regular business includes public comment, which is time that's set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have anyone who would wish to comment at this time? Hearing none, I will move to the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda tonight. These items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items that are requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require a separate discussion. Five items, as I said, tonight. The first one is to approve the May 19, 2021, regular meeting minutes. The second is to approve the May 25, 2021, Budget Committee meeting minutes. The third is to approve the June 1, 2021, work session minutes. The fourth is to authorize the board president to sign the certificate of election results for the May 18, 2021, regular district election. And the fifth and last is to approve the appointments of board officers in internal and external committee assignments for 2021-22 fiscal year, as found in the proposed board appointments and assignments document. So do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Don. I move to approve the motions as presented.
This is Dick, I second.
Commissioner Don has moved, and Commissioner Schmidt has seconded to approve the consent agenda. So I would like to ask the district recorder once again to provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. And moving to the business agenda, we have none. It was all public hearings tonight, and there was no further business items. So there being no further business items before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.